This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act and JSA 10:4-6 at sec. Notice of which is sent to the record in the Star Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Here.
Councilmember Taglia.
Here.
May LaBrosse. Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. There are no proclamations for this evening or presentations. I need a motion to approve the regular end-of-cow meeting of February 27, 2018. Need a motion?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now I need a motion for the regular end-of-cow meeting of March 13, 2018.
Offer.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. With that, we'll move right to the city manager's report.
Okay. Do we need mayor and council and invite a guest? This is the city manager's report for April 10, 2018. First is bus stop changes as of April 7. Pamphlets available in City Hall lobby. Posters also posted in the lobby at the bus terminal. Buses will no longer operate on Main Street between Court and Passaic. A total of 11 bus routes will see alterations and 30 change stops. Signs have been posted to redirect customers to River and State Street bus stops. Turn radius areas will be addressed by Friday of this week. All of the changes have been well received. The City Hall manager's office, we've only received one comment about the changes of the bus stops. Other than that, we have heard nothing. And candidly, people aren't bashful of calling the city manager's office and complaining. So if there was a condition, I'd be hearing about it. And thus far, we've only had one comment, and it really wasn't negative. I think it was an understanding issue. The city will be contracting a paving company to assist, we're getting our final quote, for pothole repairs this month. The pothole hotline is (201) 646-5058. If you see a pothole that needs repair, please report it to the hotline and bring it to our attention so the DPW can address it. Please be advised that the upcoming school board election is scheduled for Tuesday, April 17. If you normally vote at the M&amp;M Building, you have been relocated across the street from the building to 39 Broadway. Sign boards will be posted in the area for direction. Number four, the city will be hosting the Slam Dunk the Trunk on April 28 from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. This will help clean up our city parks and areas in need of cleanup. For more information, please reference the Hackensack.org. This is a very popular program. Deputy Mayor Sims spearheaded this in the past, and we've had great results. And I think it's great for the kids to basically provide service to the, community service to the community itself and be part of that community. City will be hosting a shred event on June 16 from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the Sears parking lot. We've done this in previous years, to my understanding. The building department update, there were 64 notices written, 62 inspections made, two settlements issued, and 12 CCOs were done.
Ed, real quick, just go back and give me that pothole number again.
Oh, sure. Pothole number for the hotline is (201) 646-5058. I'm pleased to report that there are no flooding issues to report in the area of High Street, Clay Street, and Stanley Place. I had my own unscientific thought process that maybe the city really doesn't have as many conditions as we thought. Maybe we don't have a flooding issue, maybe we have a drainage issue. And since we have basically jetted these lines and cleaned them, hopefully, my thought process continues and we can address other issues that flood. But obviously, the maintenance and servicing of these pipes have so far reaped rewards for the city and certainly the residents of these streets.
Just want to check that number because it might be 8058. I don't know if Al Dib is here or not.
Yeah, he's in his office.
He's in his office?
Okay.
We'll just get by the end of the meeting, just to verify. I don't want to.
8058, you think?
That's what Dave has on his phone.
Okay. Anybody dial it, just for grit?
That's what Jan told me the other day, because that's the number that you, other number, it went straight to voicemail. I mean, does, fax machine.
Let me, I'll check the website. Go ahead, continue.
That would complete the city manager's report, and I will get an understanding of what the correct number is for this pothole.
Okay.
Thank you.
You go next.
Uh, no, first we're going to wait, yes.
Next would be Jim?
Jim. Jim, then the alliance.
All right, Jim first. Go ahead.
You're right about 8058.
Go ahead.
8058.
8058? It's 8058.
The city manager is incorrect.
Correct number.
The correct number is, for all those that watch this wonderful program, it's (201) 646-8058. And I apologize, I'm, this script was not prepared by me, but the city manager holds all responsibility, so I have given you the incorrect number, and my apologies.
Your turn.
Thank you.
Okay. Jim?
Thanks, Eric. Okay, yeah, we'll be doing the presentation for the 2018 municipal budget tonight. The budget was introduced at the last council meeting and the public hearing we held at the next council meeting. But what we're going to be doing tonight is presenting not just an overview of the budget, but also of our, kind of, our whole financial situation in general, which we're characterizing this year as, as a rising tide, as you can see on, on the slide. And I'll get into that analogy a little bit later, okay? Tonight's budget, the presentation is going to be broken up into sections. We're going to be talking about our financial mission, as well as touching on the state of the city's finances. Last year, I did a whole presentation on the city's finances, but tonight we'll be touching on it briefly. And in terms of where we are with our financial mission, we'll give a progress report on the status of where we are toward our financial goals and the obstacles that we need to overcome to achieve those goals. And then finally, we talk about the 2018 budget and how the budget itself relates to our financial goals. The budget itself is, is always just the administration's financial plan for achieving goals. But in terms of our mission, our mission statement is to improve the quality of life for Hackensack residents. And that's kind of an ambiguous term, you know? For some people, the quality of life could be just a companion to share your experiences with, which is kind of outside of finance. So define, to define the quality of life as far as municipal finance is concerned, we say that's improving or increasing services while simultaneously stabilizing taxes. The trick is to do both at the same time. Increase service that we provide, improve the services that we provide, but not increase taxes in order to achieve that. And then the way we go about that, it's a, it's a four-step process. And the first step is to make the city attractive to investors. And we've been talking about this because this has been our financial plan for the last four years. But we need to define who investors are. And for investors, we're saying anyone who's made the decision to invest here in Hackensack. And that would be developers, it could be business owners, it could be homeowners. Anybody who's either thinking about investing in Hackensack or who's already invested in Hackensack, such as a homeowner, what we want them to do is to increase their investment in the city. Because as more people invest in the city, what that does is that expands our ratable base. And that's important because the ratable base is what determines our tax rate. When we increase the ratable base, the tax levy, which is that portion of the budget that's paid for by taxes, gets spread out over a larger base. And when that occurs, what that does is that lowers our tax rate. And when we can lower our tax rate, then what we're able to do is provide more services, which will then increase the tax levy, but at the same time, it won't increase the tax rate. That's the plan. And what we want to do is see how we're doing in terms of that plan. Now, first, just a snapshot of the city's finances as they stand today. Give me one second, I lost my spot. Okay. And again, I'm only going to go through this briefly. We did more detail last year. But the city's cash position, you see, is, is very strong. We're at $21.3 million. About a year ago, that number stood at about $17 million, okay? And cash position in itself doesn't necessarily prove that you're financially healthy, but a consistently strong cash position does indicate you're financially healthy. And you can see, since 2015, our cash position is in a good place. Similarly, if you see like the period from 2010 to 2014, the city's cash position was consistently low, which is an indicator that your finances are unhealthy. We're in a good position with our cash position. Surplus likewise is at a good place also. As of December 31, our surplus stands at $10.3 million, almost exactly 10% of our operating budget. We had our credit review about three, four weeks ago by Standard &amp; Poor, and S&amp;P told us that they expect the municipality to keep about 10% of their operating budget in surplus. So we were right where we should be. Okay, now, toward achieving our financial goal of increasing our ratable base, okay, I just need to explain this slide for a minute because there's a lot of information on this slide. And this, this slide in particular kind of tells the economic history of Hackensack. What it does is it shows the total property valuations. This is the, the value of every piece of property within the city of Hackensack. And this is what everybody's tax bill is based on. And if you see in 2009, all the way to the left, total property valuations were about $6.1 billion. Now, we know what the Great Recession hit 2008, and property values dropped significantly up until about 2011. Now, what happened in New Jersey and in the rest of Bergen County, around 2011, municipalities actually turned a corner, and property values started increasing. In Hackensack, the opposite. Property values continued to decrease, all the way down to the point in 2014, when we put our financial plan into place. And you see the dotted line at 2015 represents when we decided to do the citywide reassessment. And along with the citywide reassessment in 2015, we would be doing rolling reassessments 2016, 2017, 2018, and 2019. Now, those rolling reassessments were done specifically to curb the amount of tax appeals being filed, and it's been successful in that. But what it also does is it allows us to get a more accurate picture of what our assessments are. And we're happy to report that for the third year in a row, total assessments in Hackensack are, are up. And that's a trend that we want to see continue. Okay? Now, when we say the total assessments are up, okay, if you take a long, hard look at where the numbers are, you see that where they're up is really in development, okay? But in development, you gotta, just needs an explanation for a second because most people, when they think of development, think of the large-scale construction jobs that are in progress, okay? And while those are important, those aren't the projects that are increasing property values right now, okay? That's the future. We're talking about the present right now. What's happening in Hackensack is there's a lot of what I call non-pilot development. It's a lot of development going on in Hackensack that doesn't involve pilots, that projects that business owners are just expanding their business, putting more money into it, okay? And when their business expands, their assessment goes up. It's happening all around Hackensack. Now, this particular slide shows that. Okay, what this shows is our escrow expenditures. Now, escrow expenditures are fees paid, legal fees and engineering fees paid specifically to development projects. Now, what happens is the city pays our engineers and our lawyers, but we pay it with money from the developers. Developers turn the money over, we hold it in escrow, and we pay the bills from it. And you see, in 2015, our expenditures were just under a half a million, $498,000. Some modest growth in 2016, up to $579,000. And then you see an explosion of growth in 2017. That number doubles up to over $1.2 million in just one year. Now, when, because I pay the escrow bills and I deal with this number constantly, the large projects, the 240 Main or 150, 170 Main, those projects, yeah, they contribute to that $1.2 million, but really, the number comes from the smaller development projects, projects that are completed within a year. Those are the projects that are actually increasing property values here in Hackensack. Now, to give you another idea of that, an illustration of that same thing, if you look in 2014, the darker maroon shade of the pie on the right represents the amount of taxes paid by residential properties. And you see, in 2014, residents were paying about 40.3% of all the taxes here in Hackensack. Commercial properties were paying about 59.6%. Now, in 2018, you see that the residential portion has shrunk down to 37%, while the commercial has expanded up to 63%. So what we're seeing is that the tax burden in Hackensack is shifting from residential to commercial. As Hackensack becomes more developed, what we're seeing is that the commercial base is really expanding. And that's a good thing, and that's something that we want to keep an eye on, and we want to keep continuing. Now, if all this works according to plan, you know, how are we doing in terms of lowering our tax rate? Well, first what we need to do is define, you know, how do we get the tax rate? And the formula for determining the tax rate is to take the total tax levy and then divide it by the total valuations, okay? And when we do that, this, this slide represents the increases to the Hackensack municipal tax levy. Now, the levy has gone up every year, okay? It's gone up incrementally. It hasn't skyrocketed any years. And we've talked in, in the past, saying that the increases in 2015, 2016, and 2017 are all directly attributed to the increases in debt service that we had to put in to pay off our tax appeal refund liability, okay? The increase in 2018, we'll get into, when we get into the, the 2018 municipal budget, but the point is that the tax levy grows incrementally. Here we see total valuations, same number that was on that, that slide previously. And you see that total valuations are also growing. Luckily, the valuations are growing at a faster pace than the levy grows. As a result, we're happy to report that for the third year in a row, the municipal tax rate in Hackensack is going to be lower again. When we did the citywide reassessment in 2015, we established a new tax rate, municipal tax rate, of 1.693. 2016, that number drops down to 1.639. Slight drop again in 2017, down to 1.635. And in 2018, we're projecting that rate to drop again to 1.628. And that's important because as the tax rate drops, we're able to, it's able to absorb that increase to the levy, and tax increases to homeowners aren't as substantial as they would be, okay? Now, this is in the financial plan. There is a number of obstacles, though, that we, we still need to overcome. Yeah, I always say that we're in better shape than we were, but we're still not as good as we could be, okay? The obstacles that we have to overcome, the biggest obstacle we have to overcome for us in finance in 2018, is an unexpected increase in our health benefit expenses in 2017. Our employee health benefits are about a, well, they were about a $15 million enterprise, and Hackensack is self-insured. What that means is that we don't pay premiums, we pay claims. When we have a bad year, we have a bad year. That's the problem with self-insurance. You have good years, you have bad years. When you're not, when you're a member of the Safe Health Benefits Plan and you're not self-insured, you may see an increase in your premium, but at least you know what your premiums are, okay? We don't have that luxury being self-insured. And because of our benefit packages, we're going to be self-insured for at least the next few years, okay? This is an issue that, that we in finance have to address. Another obstacle is what I'm categorizing as a final cleanup of our unresolved financial receivables, which is a very technical term. What we found during our credit rating check from Standard &amp; Poor is that while we've resolved a lot of finance issues over the year, we haven't resolved all of them. When we did our, our bond sale, what we found was that we've got about nine or 10 old bond ordinances that for a variety of reasons, we weren't able to borrow against. Sometimes it was, it was poor record-keeping from seven, eight years ago. Sometimes the bond ordinance is just too old. And also, there's a number of, well, there's at least one fairly substantial grant that is, is recorded on the books as a receivable, which means that somebody owes us the money when in reality, the grant did actually hit in 2012, but it was improperly recorded. So we have to clean that up. Unfortunately, anytime you see the word "cleanup," that means money has to go into the budget. The only way you can clean things up is by putting money into the budget. So we did that in this year's budget, and what this year's budget will do is it'll finally resolve a lot of these previously unresolved financial receivables. Another obstacle that we have to overcome is increases in local school taxes. Now, as a rule, we generally don't talk about school taxes because it's out of our control. However, this year, there's a difference. It's an obstacle. It's an obstacle for two reasons. First, as we said in the beginning, stable taxes are a quality of life issue that we've been working on. However, if we stabilize taxes on the municipal side, and you still have these spiked increases on the school tax side, you're not going to get any quality of life relief from stable taxes. The other problem is that what we found during our financial review with the credit agency is that they don't really distinguish between municipal taxes and school taxes. They see taxes, okay? And we can stabilize the municipal tax rate, but if our tax rate continues to grow because of school taxes, that's a problem. What we really need to do in 2018 is take this issue on, start a dialogue with the Board of Education, and explain to them how it's really in our collective best interest that everybody stabilizes taxes. To illustrate that point a little bit, this slide shows increases to the tax levies. On the left side, you see the kind of purplish bar represents the municipal taxing, the municipal increase to the tax levy, whereas the blue bar on the right side represents the increase to the school tax levy. And the reason that this is an issue for us is because, as you can see, the municipal levy, you know, and we've talked about this in past presentations, was trending down. The school tax levy was fairly stable until you hit 2017. Now, in 2017, we talked about our 1.67% increase to the levy. We, we said a lot about it. But the school tax increase was 5.5, 5.05%. What happened was all our talk about a low tax rate, and then when the tax bills hit in August, residents were furious, and our tax collector's office had to explain why everybody's taxes went up, okay? And it really created a really difficult situation, and it's something that we absolutely need to address. Now, fortunately, in 2018, we're projecting a municipal levy increase of 1.99% and a school levy increase of 2.17%. This brings us to the 2018 budget itself, okay? And now, every time we talk about the budget, we usually start with the budget goal. And from 2014 to 2017, that budget goal never changed. It was always the same. It was to craft a budget that's accurate, sets the, sets the framework for long-term tax stability while providing the funding and planning necessary for redevelopment and community improvements. The budget goal never changed because it was a long-term goal, okay? What we're doing in 2018 is we're modifying that goal slightly. And the 2018 budget goal is to craft a budget that's accurate and continues the policies that have achieved long-term tax stability. The budget must provide the funding and plan for community improvements, redevelopment, and tax relief. We're introducing the concept of tax relief into our budget for the first time. Now, I wish I could say that the 2018 budget provides tax relief, okay? I wish I could say that, but I can't. But what I can say is that the 2018 budget does include those components that we need to be able to provide tax relief in the future, okay? There are certain things that we need to do. We need to address our health benefit issue, okay? And we need to take care of those unresolved financial issues that we talked about, okay? As I said earlier, the 2018 municipal budget, it's a budget of $105,65,733. The increase to the tax levy is $1,715,597, which is a 1.99% tax levy increase. And what this means to the average homeowner in Hackensack is an increase of $49.69. Now, the reason that the increase is low compared to the tax levy increase is because the tax rate is down, okay? Which has been part of our financial plan, to keep that rate down, okay? So that when there is a levy increase, it gets absorbed into a larger ratable base, and people don't get hammered as much as they normally would. Now, in terms of the budget itself, just a couple of components. Salaries are the biggest part of the budget, and you can see since 2014, we've had moderate growth in salaries. And in fact, in 2018, total salaries are down $345,000 from 2017. That comes about because of, we're negotiating lower salary increases with our labor unions, and a lot of that number is attributed to attrition. When people retire, resign, et cetera. Instead of immediately just replacing them at the same salary, we'll take a look to see if the position can be eliminated, if it can be combined with another position. Say, two people retire, we may combine that into one job and replace only one person. We've been doing that for a number of years, and in 2017, we were successful, and we see that salaries are down. The department operating expenses are only slightly up in 2018, okay? Their total budget's about $6.7 million, and in 2018, that number's increased only by $53,000, okay? And you can see, since 2014, there's also been very moderate growth in department operating expenses. And this is attributed to our department heads really holding the line on spending, you know? And you have to give them credit because they've been making do in their departments with very little increases over the last four years. And this brings us to health benefits, you know? And as I say in the slide, an increase in health benefits of $1.35 million is the single biggest driver in this year's tax increase. But more than that, if you notice from the, from the slide, you see those fluctuations, same fluctuations that we used to see on the tax levy increases. And those fluctuations are dangerous. They occur, again, because we're self-insured. We have good years, we have bad years. Now, you see, from 2014 to 2015 was a good year. However, from 2015 to 2016 was a bad year. 2016 to 2017, another good year, in fact, the budget actually lowered. And then 2017 to 2018 was a bad year. It's this up and down that we really, really need to address. What we need to do is, we need an action plan to address these wide fluctuations. We're nev, we're never going to get tax stability. Now, this Now, this is going to be the top priority for us in finance throughout 2018. Similar to what we did, we used to see large tax increases because of a misuse of surplus funds. We took care of that. We used to see tax increases because of large retiree payouts. When we established the accumulated absence trust, took care of that problem, and you won't see tax increases because of retiree payouts anymore. We did this with, with those killer snow storms when we established the snow removal trust. What we're going to have to do in 2018 is something along those lines. We have to take the threat of, of another bad year in health benefits out of our tax The other big driver in this year's tax increase is pensions. Pensions are up over half a million dollars in 2018, which is nothing new because you can see pension increases occur every year. Unfortunately, we have very little control over our pension expense, okay? Now, I indicate on the slide that pension expenses are going to continue to rise until savings from the 2010 Pension Reform Act begin to materialize. The legislature recognized that municipalities were paying more and more with the employer portion of their pension bills, not the employee portion, but the employer portion. And in 2010, they passed the Pension Reform Act, which did put a number of things into the pension plans that will save municipalities money. The problem is that they only affect new employees. But they do affect employees hired since 2010, seven years ago. We're starting to see some relief in terms of the savings from the 2010 Pension Reform Act. Okay? Hopefully, what that'll do is that'll start to curtail some of our annual pension expenses. Some of the highlights in the 2018 municipal budget, you know, as we said before, salaries and wages are down 0.8%, and department operating expenses coincidentally happen to be up by 0.8%, although they're different numbers. Salaries are down $345,000, while operating expenses are only up $50,000. Our utility expenses, and this is what we pay for, electricity, natural gas, telephone, and gasoline are all trending down. Water's not. Water is trending up. Thank you, Sue, as water. Okay? But the other things, most, most particularly, electricity and natural gas are trending down. I think in 2018, yeah, there's a drop of about $220,000 in our total utility expenses. The reason that happens is because in 2015, the city embarked on a, on a program to replace a lot of fixtures with energy-efficient fixtures. Street lighting is now energy-efficient. And we were told that we would see savings over the years, and apparently, it's true. I, I honestly, I didn't believe it at the time. But electricity and natural gas are trending down. Debt service and deferred charges are flat from last year. Now, you remember, 2015, 2016, 2017, the increase in debt service was the single biggest driver of every year's tax increase. If you remember last year, the increase in debt service for the tax appeals was 1.8 million, whereas the total increase in the tax levy was only 1.7 million, okay? This year, and probably for the next few years, now that we had our bond sale this morning on March 28th, the debt service and deferred charges are flat, and they, they will be flat for a number of years to come. Pension expenses, like we said, $539,000 higher than in 2017. Health benefits, again, as we said, up by 10.7% to a total of 16.6 million, again, which is going to be our number-one priority in 2018. I really don't want to come back to you next year and say we need to increase health benefits again. That's going to be our top priority this year. Pilot revenue in 2018 is one-quarter of 1% of total revenue. Put it another way, pilot revenue is almost insignificant in this budget. There's a lot of talk about pilot revenue, okay? And people have to understand, pilots are the future for Hackensack. Right now, we're only concerned with the present, okay? Pilot revenues aren't factoring yet. They will. They'll have their time. Right now, what our job is, is to prepare the framework for it, okay? But we, we can't bank on pilots in the present, and we don't. 2018, the 2018, what's new in 2018 is that we're including funding for the special law enforcement officers that are going to be placed in the schools. This would be the SLEO3s that have been reported at previous meetings. This is a, a joint venture between us and the Board of Education. And, and funding for that program is included in the 2018 budget. Likewise, in 2018, we're seeing the return of the Hackensack Rent Stabilization Board. Now, this is a board that I've been told has been dormant for about 10 years, but I, I don't know that for a fact. My financial records go back eight years, and I see no expenses from eight years ago. But I don't know how long that board has actually been dormant. Hackensack has a rent stabilization ordinance, and the rent stabilization board, which is made up of residents who are tenants, is the vehicle for tenants to bring their complaints to the board to keep the landlords in compliance. Funding for that board is included in the 2018 budget. What we also did in 2018 is we had to increase our reserve for tax appeals, up to $1 million. And this is because 2017, although the 2017 budget included the increased debt service for tax appeal refunds, 2017 was the first year we didn't have to go out and finance our tax appeal refunds. And we don't ever want to go through that again. In order to achieve that, we established the reserve for tax appeals last year, and what we're seeing now is that we're, we have to beef it up a little bit to make sure that we don't have to finance in the future. Okay? The good news is the 2018 budget includes an increase of over $1 million in local revenues. As I said earlier, our, our revenues in 2017 all hit projections, and over, we, we saw over a million-dollar increase in revenues such as construction fees, municipal court fines, interest and costs on taxes, and fees and permits. And that's the good news, because that's sustainable revenue. When you have an increase in one year, it's safe to assume that you're going to have an increase the next year. And what this does is this takes the burden off any tax increase that we have to put in. Overall, like I said, the increase to the tax levy is 1.99%. This slide shows all of the tax levy increases going back to 2004. You know, we use this slide every year, and the dotted line you see in 2014 represents when we enacted our new fiscal policies, and the policies were designed to stabilize the tax increases. And you can see we've done that, 3.9%, 2.5%. Last year's 1.6%, and this year's 1.9%. Now, again, as we indicated early, we're not happy with 1.9% tax levy increase, and you shouldn't be happy either. But I can say that the increases to the tax levy were necessary in order for us to be able to achieve our goals and to look in the future toward being able to provide for tax relief. In, in order to allow for these increases in the tax levy from additional services, we have to continue our efforts to lower the tax rate. We've got to take the burden off of the taxpayer by increasing our valuations, which lowers the tax rate. And I just want to go back to this slide that I, I did earlier, because again, this is important, because it does tell the real story of Hackensack's finances. After the citywide reassessment, which is that dotted line at 2015, again, you see assessments going up. And this is why I, I characterize our finances as a rising tide, because that's what we're looking to do, is we're looking to build that number up. We want to get that number back to the $6 billion mark as quickly as we can, okay? What we want to do is we have to increase this rising tide of total property valuations, because only then are we going to be able to provide the services that we want to without increasing taxes at the same time, okay? And it, if you're a visual learner like I am, you can picture that right side of the dotted line as a rising tide, okay? Because, as the saying goes, a rising tide lifts all boats. And what that means is that if we're able to achieve what we're, what we're attempting to do and what we've been successful at, and we've, we continue to be successful, total property value is going to come up, and everybody is going to benefit. That doesn't mean, that means not just municipal taxpayers, but it's going to be school taxpayers also. Every taxpayer in Hackensack will benefit if we can continue that rise that we're seeing in total property values. And what the 2018 budget does, it's specifically geared to put in place what we need to continue that same progress. Now, the public hearing on the budget will be held at the next council meeting, April 24th. It'll be 8 o'clock here in council chambers. Copies of the budget are available right now on the city website. They've been up on the website for about a, for about a week now. This particular presentation will be up on the website tomorrow, so that, you know, we'll be ready for the, for the public hearing on April 24th. And at that point, following the public hearing, the council can either amend the budget or adopt it. If you choose to amend it, some amendments require another public hearing, some don't. We can cross that bridge when we get there. But that's not just the budget presentation. I thought it was important to give an overview of our finances as well. And while the, the, the public will have their chance at the public hearing at the next meeting, if anybody on the mayor council have any questions about not just the budget itself, but of our finances in general, I'd be happy to go through that now.
Anybody?
No, I, I think you did a wonderful job, Jim. Thank you for explaining everything.
Excellent job, as usual. Great job, Jim.
Ah, thank you. Kudos.
David?
Good job, Jim.
Ah, thanks, David.
Excellent job, Steve.
Okay. But then, like I said, we'll be, we'll be doing the public hearing at, at the next meeting. I'm sorry, Jim. And again, like I said at the last council meeting, normally, I would have done this when the budget was introduced, but the bond sale was, was, was really a time consumer for us.
Okay. Thank you so much. I'm going to take a two-minute bio break before we bring up or do the Main Street Alliance budget. All right? Okay, we're back in business. Right now, I'd like to open up to the public strictly for a hearing on the Main Street Alliance, Business Alliance for their 2018 budget. Anybody who'd like to speak? We'll be passing Resolution 149-18 this evening for their budget. Anybody who'd like to speak on the Main Street Alliance budget, please come forward. Actually, I need a motion to open to the public for them.
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anybody from the public? Seeing none, motion to close to the public.
Is Patrice here?
Yep.
Patrice is here.
She's here.
Yes. I'm going to ask her to come speak.
I did see you back there.
I'll ask her to speak after we close, because she's part of the alliance. Motion to close?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Good evening.
Good evening.
It is my distinct pleasure to appear in front of the city council on behalf of the merchants, property owners, and developers, past presidents from Main Street. We want to again, thank you for your support, your guidance, and your willingness to work on the renaissance and revitalization of downtown Hackensack. Just go down the street and you'll see evidence of all of the progress that's happened in our tenure over the last 12 years, and we look forward to future, remain with success and good fortune in lots of full-time residents in downtown Hackensack. So thank you again for the adoption of the 2018.
Thank you. We'll be passing a resolution shortly. But I thank you, Horstman. Okay, with that, we'll go to regular city business, Resolution 141-18.
This is the resolution for the adoption of ordinance number 41-2017 as a bond ordinance. It needs to be removed from the table, Jim. Are we doing this, or are we leaving it?
If I, if I, just give a, a quick, real quick update. Ted and I have met on this a number of times over the last couple of months. There were a lot of pieces that we had to put together and information we had to get. We'll be meeting again specifically on this issue next week, so we should have an action for this at the next meeting.
Yeah, because we got to figure out what, you know, we can't keep tabling it. We got to come up with some solution here. Okay, so we'll table it for now. Resolution 142-18.
This is a final adoption of ordinance number 7-2018, an ordinance to amend Chapter 112 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, NOISE, to adopt a noise-control ordinance based upon the model ordinance prepared by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection pursuant to the New Jersey Noise Control Act. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Okay. Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on the NOISE ordinance, please come forward? Seeing no one from the public, a motion to close to the public?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer. Second.
All in favor? Aye? Okay.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack County, Bergen, and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 7-2018 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 143-18.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 12-2018, an ordinance to amend Chapter 117 of the Code of the City of Hackensack Parks to prohibit dogs except for guide dogs and service dogs as defined at NJSA 10:5-5 in Atlantic Street Park. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Okay, I need a motion to open to the public, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anybody from the public who'd like to speak about this ordinance pertaining to Atlantic Street Park and dogs? Seeing no one from the public, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion to adopt?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack County, Bergen, and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 12-2018 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 144-18.
This is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 13-2018, an ordinance requiring the retrofitting of certain existing storm drain inlets within the city of Hackensack. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Okay, anybody, I need a motion to open to the public?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this resolution and this ordinance only, please come forward? Seeing no one from the public, a motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion to adopt this ordinance?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack County, Bergen, and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 13-2018 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 145-18.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 14-2018, an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank as per NJSA 40A:4-45.14. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anybody from the public who'd like to speak to this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward? Seeing no one from the public, motion to close to the public?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack County, Bergen, and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 14-2018 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Okay, thank you. Resolution 146-18.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 15-2018, an ordinance adopting 77 River Street redevelopment plan consisting of block 203, lots 4, 5, 6, 7, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16.
Have a motion, please.
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 15-2018 is introduced, does now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on April 24th, 2018 at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter. at a meeting to be held on April 24th, 2018, at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with the notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 147-18.
This is a resolution formally designating redevelopment and authorizing redevelopment agreement with 22 West Camden Street Hackensack Urban Renewal LLC.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Resolution 148-18.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 16-2018, an ordinance authorizing a 15-year tax exemption for a market rate rental apartment project to be constructed by 22 West Camden Street Urban Renewal LLC, an urban renewal entity pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law, NJSA 40A:20-1 EdSec.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. There you curvebowl there, huh?
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 16-2018 is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on April 24th, 2018, at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council, and at such time and place that all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with the notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Okay, thank you. Resolution 149-18.
This is a resolution adopting Main Street Business Alliance budget.
Need a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Resolution 150-18.
This is a resolution authorizing tax refunds for duplicate payments, state board judgments, and overpayments.
Need a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Is that 150? Yes, 151-18.
This is a resolution concurring with the planning board's redevelopment investigation regarding block 531 Lot 1, block 527 Lot 5.02, and block 532.02 Lot 1, otherwise known as 68 Sabriskey Street, and designating it as an area in need of redevelopment for non-condemnation purposes.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye? Resolution 152-18.
This is a resolution authorizing emergency temporary appropriations prior to the adoption of the budget for NJSA 40A:4-20.
Need a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Resolution 153-18.
This is a resolution awarding New Jersey State co-op contracts for the purchase of three Chevrolet Tahos special service vehicles for the fire departments.
I need a motion, please?
Offer.
Take them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And Resolution 154-18, payment of bills.
Resolution authorizing payment of bills.
Need a motion?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anybody have any issues with the consent agenda? There's four resolutions on it. No issues?
The following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, and consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. The consent agenda consists of Resolutions 155-18 through 158-18. 155-18 is a resolution authorizing the appointment of Sergeant Brian Feely as the 911 telephone system coordinator for the city of Hackensack. Resolution 156-18 is a resolution authorizing the appointment of Class II special law enforcement officers. Resolution 156-18, I'm sorry, 157-18 is a resolution authorizing appointment of Gary Trizano to the Environmental Commission. Resolution 158-18 is a resolution authorizing a raffle license for the Hackensack River Keeper. Need a motion?
Okay, I need a motion to accept the consent agenda as it was read?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. This time, I need a motion to open to the public?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak, please come forward?
Good evening, Larry Eisen, 390 Maple Hill Drive. When an employee in the city does something special, I think they should be recognized. And I had a large amount of paper, which I took down to the Green Street Recycling. And as soon as the gentleman who runs that place, and I don't know what his name is, saw me try to lift the boxes out of my car, he ran out of his office, wouldn't let me touch them, took them himself and put them into the proper receptacles. And I think that was a tremendous gesture on his part. He didn't have to do that, and I think he should be complimented by the city manager for the kind of service he provides.
I agree.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you for that, sir. And we'll see to it that the city manager speaks to him. Thank you.
Carolyn Davis, 122 Stanley Place here in Hackensack. Has anyone here ever visited the Strong Museum in Rochester, New York?
Visited what?
The Strong.
No.
I got a chance to visit that this weekend. My sister lives there. It is a magnificent, magnificent museum. We're doing a lot of developing, but I see that most of it, as far as entertainment, is for older children, sports, or adults. This museum is catered to the toddler up to 10 years old. And not only is it entertaining, it's educational. I've never experienced anything like that before. To give you a quick example, the big supermarket up there in upstate New York is Wegmans. In this museum, they have a miniature Wegmans, which is an exact replica of the store. The children go in, they have a shopping cart, there's a restaurant where they can stop and eat toy food. One can actually be the person who's selling the food. They have a cash register. In their shopping cart, they can go around and shop. Everything has a label on it, so it can be scanned. They shop, they can weigh their food. It's educational while being fun. That's just one of the things they have there. As they get to the cashier, they have regular cashier, and you push a button, and they push their food down, just like in a regular grocery store. Then they go behind, they act as the cashier. As they scan everything, everything scans, and it comes up with a receipt, and they get a receipt. It's also very educational. Another thing they had there in this museum was a miniature movie theater, where the children could act as the ticket person. There's a ticket booth they go in, they get tickets, they actually go into a theater and watch a movie theater, a movie. So, as we're developing, I'm hoping that somewhere, we may not be able to duplicate that, but it's something that we need that's entertaining and educational for that younger group. I saw children as young as toddlers can barely walk, but there was something about shopping, because this is what they see their parents do, and they got excited about going around and getting the food and putting it in. They even have a gluten-free aisle, so it's just very educational. I really enjoyed it. I can't go over everything that was there, but it was amazing. So, we'll want to think about that when we're developing in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Davis, what was the, was it the Strong Museum?
S-R-O-N-G, Strong.
Okay, is it anything online on it?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Rich Serbo, 46 Spring Valley Avenue, Hackensack. You know, I want to welcome the public like I always do. This is a public meeting, and it's centered to the public, really. We don't get much time, we don't get much to say. So, let me start by saying that we're in the middle of this whole fracas now with the Board of Education election, okay? And I think it's mostly about politics, about money, about just political war, okay? It's nothing about education at all, okay? Now, when this was split and our city became two different little nations, okay? It's a tragedy, okay? And it's a problem we have now. In the 80s, that wasn't so. We had a city and a Board of Education that was whole. In the early 90s, it was broken apart for elected officials to the Board of Education. And it's a disaster. Everyone knows it, you see it. Now, why, if it was broken apart at one time, why can't we mend it back to being whole? I asked the mayor that, and he can answer it when he's at his leisure, okay? So, and I keep saying okay, because I want to emphasize these things to you. It almost seems like you're not listening. So, I, okay, I say continually, so you listen. And, okay, so, Mr. Mangan mentioned some interesting points tonight. Do we scrutinize these health claims that are driving taxes up? Do we just, you know, do we sit down and scrutinize them? Or do they just get accepted, and those claims are driving up the budget, like you're saying? That's a question for you when you get a minute. And also, it was interesting that you said that these pilot payments have nothing to do with helping out yet. That's the future. And it's great to wave a flag for the future, but it's true. We've been talking about it so long, the clock is not going to start on payments from those projects for a while. It's just, it's wrong that you gave away the city in such big numbers, and we need that to start helping the city now, not in the future. Those projects won't pay any payments until they're completely built, and then the clock starts on payments. Isn't that right, Mr. Mangan? I think it is. So, let's make sure that that is known to the public. How about the tennis courts? Mr. Iron Edinburgh, you had $40,000 to fix a tennis court. Are we ever going to get them fixed so we can play tennis on them this coming spring and summer? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, good evening.
Evening.
Mayor, council, and other members. My name is Louis Decepolo. I live at 314B Third Street at Hackensack. And two weeks ago, I sent an email introducing the off fossil fuels elected official pledge to everyone. I'm here tonight to formally request this council to sign the pledge. This pledge acknowledges that we humanity have denied climate change and delayed solutions for so long that we have squandered any opportunity for a more gradual transition. By signing, you are pledged to phase out fossil fuels and achieve 100% clean renewable energy within this jurisdiction by the year 2035. As the seat of the county government, by signing, you will also set a precedent for the rest of the county and ultimately the state to follow. So, asking anyone here, you know, if you would like, you know, please indicate tonight. Raise your hand. Do you agree to go online, sign the pledge? And you will join the state senator, our state senator, and also our state assembly woman in signing this pledge. I think it's something that we can do, and we need to do, starting from the ground up, and eventually, you know, spread to the rest of the state and the country. So, I don't know if anyone would take a bold step tonight, raise their hand if they intend on signing. The email, or you can go online and look up the URL for the pledge. It's an online pledge. It's a symbolic pledge, but it's, you know, it's basically you're acknowledging that you would support these efforts, and I think they're very, it's something that we need to do. So, thank you.
Thank you. What I will say, it's Decepolo?
Decepolo.
Decepolo. What I will say is, I'm all in favor of eliminating fossil fuels as much as possible, but the one thing realistically we have to look at as a municipality is how logistically possible is that to do that with all of our, like this building, for instance? The cost to replace this building to make it, non-fossil fuels involved at all would be a lot of money. So, we have to price these things out, because it's not just when we sign on board for that, a whole city's signing on board. Every taxpayer has to sign on board when we're making that decision, because they're going to share the cost of doing that. So, that's one thing I would research before I commit to it. But you have my commitment personally, that I would love to eliminate fossil fuels with all the other fuel sources we have out there between solar and wind and everything else they're using now. So, you have my pledge on that. But I would, in fairness to the taxpayers, I want to make sure, you know, everybody's on board.
It's a symbolic pledge, right? So, it's basically, like you said, you're looking for opportunities, maybe electric vehicles for certain functions in the city.
I think what it is, it's like, you know, you shoot for the stars, if you get to the moon, it's pretty good.
Unfortunately, we squandered many years, and we have the, you know, we have the lesser leisure to do that. Thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Richard Grant. I'm a resident of Hackensack.
Sir?
Also here in support of the oath pledge. Okay. As part of my activism, I constantly visit numerous websites and blogs that are intended for professionals in the energy industry and for policymakers to find new articles and opinion pieces that I can post and tweet links to. So, what I've been learning through doing this is that the large consulting and business analyst firms that serve institutional investors and wealthy individuals are regularly reporting that the cost of solar energy, rooftop utility scale and community solar, of wind energy, land and offshore, of utility scale batteries, and of various energy management measures have all been dropping and are forecast to continue to keep dropping. In the same way, the technologies and the policy incentives that drive renewables, energy storage, and energy management have increased in number and improved in outcomes and can be expected to continue to increase and improve. In addition, the number of models available, of units sold, and of charging stations installed for all-electric cars, delivery vans, semi-trailers, and school and mass transit buses keep increasing. Range on full charge keeps rising while prices keep falling. Across the nations, most states, more counties, and more municipal governments are taking more actions aimed at boosting renewable energy, energy storage, energy management, and electric vehicles. These aspects of this transformation are happening in a decentralized and uneven manner, and there are setbacks and lapses, but overall, their pace appears to be accelerating as more individuals, governments, private companies, and nonprofits replicate the actions of the early adopters. What we don't know yet is whether this irreversible change is happening quickly enough and broadly enough to safeguard our future and that of the next generations. Every action that can be taken will matter. We can aim for the stars, but accomplish one thing at a time. And I noticed in the discussion of the budget, there was talk about the cost savings from changing the streetlights. There is a host of things that could be done, case by case, instance by instance. One resource is Sustainable Jersey, which provides training and grants and other aid.[1712.85] One resource is Sustainable Jersey, which provides training and grants and other aid. And I hope that you can embed this, this thinking in, in all your decisions, the balancing of what we need to do to protect ourselves in the future against staying within budget. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well said.
Hello, I'm Paula Regovan. I actually live in Teaneck, right near the oil train that goes through Bergen County. And I'm with the Coalition to Ban Unsafe Oil Trains. You're lucky you don't have them here in, in Hackensack. They carry volatile Bakken crude oil that's fracked in North Dakota.
We have them.
With the Bakken crude oil coming through?
We have, we have the day, with the dangerous chemicals.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Crude oil, but we have.
So, you know, you have, you have similar problems. The Bakken crude oil is fracked in North Dakota, and a train carrying Bakken crude oil derailed in Quebec, in La Megantic, Quebec, and forty-seven people were killed instantly, leaving sixteen children, orphans. They, in Teaneck and, you know, a lot of the towns in Bergen, they, they go through day and night. The Bakken crude oil is dangerous, not only because it explodes like a bomb, but the fracking that goes on in North Dakota is so, so horrible to the land and to the water and to the people. And what the crude oil does when, after it's refined and becomes part of, you know, fuel and, and it, it destroys our, our air, our world, and causes climate change. So, what, what we're, we're talking about is actually not asking you as a town to, we would like that every one of our towns to do things like you're doing with your, your streetlights and whenever you can to any kind of buildings, you know, with solar power or wind power, whatever. But we, we're asking you basically to support two pieces of, one piece of legislation in the state legislature. That's what the pledge will, is asking you to do, is supporting S Senate Bill fourteen oh five, A eighteen twenty-five. That's the name of the bill that was referred to it. It now has an official name and sponsors and cosponsors. And what we're trying to do is get municipalities to support that bill, which says that by 2035, we want all electricity in New Jersey to produce, be produced by renewable energy. So, it's not saying, hey, Hackensack, you've got to do that, it's all on you. It's a statewide effort to get the state to turn to renewable energy resources by 2035. So, that, we're really asking you to support either as individuals or as a town council, S fourteen oh five or, and A eighteen twenty-five. And I, I really hope you, you will do that, that you'll take the lead on that in our county because it's so vital for our futures. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
I'm Ruth Bauer-Neustatter, and I live at two seventy-nine Hamilton Place. And I've lived here in Hackensack my whole adult life, and I feel very much a part of the city. And I feel like the city is, has offered me a wonderful community over the last several I am very, I've been, I was on the environmental commission for many years, excuse me, and my heart is in that direction. I think it's our future, it's our grandchildren's future. And if any of you have grandchildren, I think it's important that we think about what their lives will be like. Ten, twenty, thirty-five is a long ways off. I think it's too, too long. And to, to make the change, the changes that we need, Hackensack has, what, seventy municipalities, and we can be a real leader if we make some changes in the way that we go from fossil fuels to renewable energy. I, I have some friends who live in Bloomfield, which is not part of Bergen County, it's Essex County, but they have put together a PowerPoint presentation. And basically what it shows is that doing the things that we need to do, that we need to do, will save Hackensack money. And since we were listening to the budget, I think if we could make a date for them to come over and present this PowerPoint presentation to you so you could actually see what's going on. What happened in Bloomfield is that the city is now listening and are willing to make changes. So, that's a very positive, a very positive change. And I'd like to, you know, I'd like to, to make a date with the council, whoever can come, with the, this couple who have put this together, and so you can actually hear for yourself what's going on. On a separate issue, but related, I'm very concerned, I've spoken with Deputy Mayor Canestrino about this, about getting garbage cans in the city. We absolutely have to have them. I walk every morning, and I see that the residents are just throwing things on the ground instead of in receptacles, except on Anderson Street where we have them. And that doesn't always do very much good, but there has to be an emphasis in this direction so that we can clean up the city. And I had come up with a little saying, which is, be green, keep Hackensack clean. And that's something that you might want to put on the garbage cans. I think my time is up.
Thank you, Ruth. Yes, it is. Thank you.
The last time I was here, Mrs. Canestrino, you said Hackensack was an anomaly because we have paid fire department and sanitation. Well, you know, I did this last time I was here while I was sitting in the back, but I couldn't get up and speak again. No, we're not an anomaly. Ridgewood is the anomaly because sixty-five percent of their taxes goes to the schools. We're in, what, the forty-five percent? We're on par with Englewood, okay? Teaneck is fifty-six percent. We're not the anomaly, all right? Ridgewood is the anomaly. I don't, I don't know that there's anybody in this city that wouldn't be willing to put more into our schools. And I happened to go to a budget meeting last night on the schools, and I happened to know that that spike was health insurance premiums, not claims. That's what Ms. Mark said last night. It was for premiums. So, you're talking about the Board of Ed getting under control, and you're talking about switching from self-insured paying claims to paying premiums. That's exactly what that spike was, was pay, insurance premiums. And I wouldn't say this if it wasn't true, because I was there last night. But, you know, how can you control that? You can't, just like you can't control the, paying the claims. That's what happened with that. And if you want to switch to, to paying premiums, we're going to have the same issue. So, health benefits are an issue for individuals, for school boards, for cities. It's an issue, they just keep going up. And you're, also, the assessments, yes, that's, that's the base, and don't, I feel like they're getting inflated, and we're getting, drowning under this wave. Because my house is not worth what the assessment says it is. It's just not. And I don't know anybody that it is, okay? I, I wouldn't have come back here. But then there was also something that, that happened that reminded me. You know, just having the camera, that's not transparency. Transparency is listening to the residents also. You've reduced the amount of time that we can speak, but also, every one of you elected are LeBros team, correct? You're all LeBros team. And there's a LeBros team Facebook page that censors the residents. So, every one of you is censoring the residents. I don't know who runs it, but does the city have a social media policy? Because it is you. You are all LeBros team, and if somebody is blocked from commenting on that page, you are all censoring people because you don't want, it, I'm blocked, shockingly, I'm blocked. Steve Gelber is blocked. There are plenty of people that are blocked because you don't like us. So, we've been blocked. That, that is part of transparency, goes both ways, listening, not just speaking. Because when you speak, you're only saying what you want the camera to hear, but you don't want to hear what we have to say. And my time is up.
Thank you. If you wanted to, if you have something to answer.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
All right. Wait till the end, I'll wait till the end.
All right. Anybody else in the public? Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Steffi?
Okay.
Sorry, Stephanie?
No, no, that's all right. I'll take it. It's better than something, so I'm cool. Good evening.
You could call me Johnny.
Yeah. In regards to the environmental pledge, I think it's something we should definitely look into. All great ideas start somewhere. I think we have to sit down and, and look at the different costs and different options, but I think it's definitely something that's, that's worthwhile. Before you spoke, I was actually sitting, thinking about my children and how, you know, the future is going to be, not just with pollution, but with technology, you always have these what-ifs. So, you know, you try to pitch your life for them, and I think it's something that should be looked into and addressed. So, thank you for coming out. Mr. Eisen, it was nice to hear that nice, positive comment. I think nowadays, there's a lot of negative all over on a national level in the news. So, it's nice when the, a nice gesture is done, and it just brings us back to, you know, how we should treat each other. And on that note, next week's National Volunteer Week. So, I know we have a lot of opportunities in Hackensack and in the county to help out and do something good, whether it's, you know, picking up a box of papers for someone or, you know, joining an organization. There's a lot of opportunities here in the city, and we have a great base of people that are involved in a lot of things. So, I think that would be a nice, nice thing to get involved in. Saturday is opening day for baseball. We are looking at the different numbers, and we have six T-ball teams, which I think is a pretty big turnout for this year. So, I think for a while, there's a little bit of lull, a lull in the participation in baseball. So, we're hoping it makes a comeback. And as a mom, it's not just about doing sports, but to me, it's getting the kids out of the house, off of the iPads and Xbox, and just, you know, being outside. And I try to explain to my kids what we did when we were younger. We went to the park, and we played in the summer till, you know, the sun came up and till it went down. And it's, it's not like that anymore, it's a little tougher. But if you get the kids involved in things, it's a very nice, you know, it's healthy for them, it's healthy for the parents, it's healthy for the community, it's a good thing. And just piggybacking on that, Ms. Davis, I think that's a great idea, to look into something for the younger, the younger kids. You know, we have a lot of these trampoline parks and, and bounce house places around, and sometimes the little ones get lost. So, you know, if there's something like that, they could come into the city and someone that wanted to do something like that, I would, you know, I think that would be a great thing. And thank you again to Jim and Ted and all the department heads and employees and everyone involved in, in the budget. I think we forget that, you know, running a city is a, is a big, a big deal. And it's nice that we get to sit here and, and see, you know, explain to us what's going into it. It's not just a bunch of numbers thrown at us and taking the time to explain what's going on and how it affects us and the overall picture is important to us and the public, and I appreciate that. Other than that, have a great night, and thank you for coming out.
Thanks, Steph. I'll, I'll also say again, great job, Jim. You know, as usual, excellent presentation, but more important than that, you know, we're seeing the results of the long-term planning and the short and long-term planning that you've been very instrumental in happen, see happening here in Hackensack. Yes, Mr. Servo, pilots are our future, and, you know, we've always presented it that way. Again, without long-term planning, these things don't happen. So, we're planting the seeds and waiting for them to grow, absolutely. You know, we do have one pilot that we're receiving, one small one. This year, we've always said was probably going to be a quiet year. Next year, we're hoping to see one, probably two more come on board, and then the flow will continue after that. You know, it's a way, again, of bringing more ratables in, to the city, bringing more revenue into the city, and this is what we need to offset the expenditures and help with tax relief, absolutely.
The future is now.
There's a couple of, excuse me, please, there's a couple of items on here for redevelopment, just to run through them quickly. There was something on here talking about Seventy-seven River Street. I know we've talked before about this. That's where they're proposing to put one of these rock climbing facilities there, one that would be state-of-the-art and even for Olympic trainees, et cetera. So, that would be a very nice addition to that very awkward spot there on River Street. Twenty-two West Camden is on here, and you're talking about Camden and State, that corner. We're looking to put sixty residential units there. It's a rather small piece of property, but I think we're very well-designed and a good use where now it's just a vacant parking lot. And then there's Zabriskie Street, that's the county property where the county DPW used to be. We're conducting the redevelopment investigation in coordination with the developers there. So, those three, excuse me, redevelopment items were on tonight's agenda as well. Also, coincidentally with the discussion tonight about our environment, is another new environmental commission member. So, we welcome Gary Chisano to the environmental commission and thank him for volunteering. And it's wonderful that we've seen that revitalize the environment. I know, Ruth, you said you were on it years back, and it kind of fell by the wayside. And we've had a renewed interest in that. And, you know, I think especially, you know, what we heard tonight, you know, about your fossil fuel initiatives, even if we can't do it all, we can certainly take steps in a positive direction. So, I, you know, I'd love to invite you folks to, you know, get together and maybe, when they, I think they're ready to have one of their first meetings of the environmental commission, to join them. And, you know, that would be a great place to bring information to, because then they're a liaison to us, and then they share that information with us. As well, Ruth, you mentioned a presentation, I'm sure if you coordinate with Ted, we could get that done at one of our committee of the whole meetings. And we, we always like to stay informed and stay up to date as much as we can with these things. And, and of course, you know, want to, to be environmentally friendly to the, to the greatest extent that we can. Thank you all for coming. Thank you, folks, especially for sharing your information with us. We really appreciate it. Have a good night.
David?
As Stephanie said, this Saturday, baseball is going to have its opening day at eleven AM. This is the sixty-ninth year for baseball. Earlier this evening, Hackensack basketball had its closing ceremony, it had pizza and trophy ceremony at the Civic Center. I want to state thanks to Steve Savage for a great job. Last week was the fiftieth anniversary of the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King. Mon Olive had a walk from the high school to the church staff. Kids turned down grandparents' clergy, but most of all, they were sanitation workers. That was one of the reasons why Martin Luther King was in Memphis, Tennessee on that day. Next Tuesday, get out and vote. The polls are open from two PM to eight PM. Good night, thank you.
Me? First of all, I want to give my condolences to David, he lost an uncle about a few days ago. I think your family recuperated from the loss. And Jim, it's no question that you always do a good job. And thank you, Ted, for contributing to the, to the numbers. The same for Kathy, that is one of the other members in the financial committee. And it's no question that I would love to see, like, solar panels in the city buildings and the schools and even number that are right, we'd like to see the police and electric cars. That is the way we should be going. If we got the money, we will do it, right, Mayor? And we had the other night, the, what we call the Latin night, and was successful, you know, they played with pack. Thank you to Kathy and John to stay there for like three hours. They don't understand what happened, but they enjoyed the mu, they enjoyed the music. That was really good. And I think it one of the first times, I think, we made some profit, because every ticket was sold out. And thank you, everybody, for coming. Have a good night.
Thank you. I too want to thank Jim on the budget and Kathy and Leo on the finance committee. They keep it tight. One of the most important parts, it wasn't mentioned, yes, the pilots are coming and it's part of the future. The fact that the city has tightened its belt until we get to that point is one of the key parts, that we, we've kept spending down, we've cut back during the transition into before when these pilots are going to kick in. So, that, that's very important, and great job there. I was honored to be part of the Martin Luther King Walk. I was, I didn't, I missed a walk, but I made it to the church in time. Sounds like a song, made it to the church in time. And was honored to be there, was humbling. Latin night was great, packed house, standing room only. Lucky the fire department wasn't there. I think we were over, over occupancy, or close. Green, I mean, we know that's the way to go, folks. I mean, and we appreciate you coming here, and it's, it's going to be, you know, I doubt if anybody, I seriously doubt that anybody up here would be sitting here in 2035. But, you know, our job will be to, to start the ball rolling, pass the baton down the road to somebody. You know, some of the buildings that are going up are using green technology, we're making sure of that with the developers, that's important. making sure of that with the developers, that's important. Rooftop garden, stuff like that, we're, we're, we're asking for and green spaces throughout the city. But the other green, I think a lot of us are missing, and baseball made me think of it, is us, we as a society, especially our children, are not green anymore. We used to play outside, we used to be outside all the time. Now, we spend our nights in front of a television, an iPad or a laptop or a computer. And not just us, our children, my new babysitter for my two-year-old grandson is, is an iPhone. It's true. My daughter only hands him the iPhone, he sits there for two hours straight and doesn't say a word. And that's, as, you know, convenient as it is for a two-year, two-year-old to be able to keep him busy, it's not good. Not blaming them, it's just the way it is right now, I think. But we need to focus on, you know, family values, getting back out, baseball, you know, all, all the good things we enjoyed when we were children. I mean, when I was young, you were out as soon as you could, you ate breakfast on your day, you know, on a school day off, you were out the door and you came back around sundown. You know, whenever, when you were hungry and the dinner bell was ringing. And I miss those days. You don't see it today with today's youth and society's changed quite a bit, but that's something we need to get back to, in my opinion. And that's the other part of being green to me, is not just saving energy, but saving us from, you know, not only that, all these devices are using fossil fuels, by the way. Why we can't come up with solar powered laptops and devices is beyond me. Baseball at Hackensack, big grand opening Saturday. I'm hoping the numbers are up. I know, Stephanie, you mentioned it, T-ball had six teams. I mean, I, baseball has dropped probably from 750 kids in Hackensack to about 250 last year. So, you know, it's, it's a national pastime that's just basically passing away and it's sad. And it's, it's not that all these kids aren't doing something. Junior track is, is taking, is, you know, taking a lot of kids away from baseball, but it's, the numbers are down and it's a telltale sign. And it's not just us, it's other towns as well, so. And with that, I want to wish everybody a safe trip home, enjoy the rest of the evening. Thank you. Motion to close?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Well, that was fun.